Good evening.
Good evening.
Welcome to the February Work Session, City of Hiram. Pastor McGrady? Get it started?
Yes, sir. Let's pray. Father, now as always, we say thank you for this night, thank you for this day, thank you for the watch and keep all day. Thank you, God, that you are the author and the finisher of our faith. Thank you, God, that you are the watcher, the keeper. Father, your word says, "Your name is a strong tower and the righteous run in and are saved." Father, I pray now for these appointed elected officials tonight, God, that they will rule and guide, led by your wisdom and knowledge. In Jesus' name I pray, with faithful even. Amen.
Amen.
Ladies and gentlemen, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Principal Black. It's your turn.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much once again for allowing us to recognize our awesome Hiram Hornets. It's a great honor and privilege to be here tonight to do so. We're going to start with kindergarten. When I think of a student to use as a positive example, Zanna is always the first that comes to mind. She is an exceptional student and a wonderful friend to her peers. She is polite, respectful, and has a contagious laugh. I am grateful to be part of her academic journey. Congratulations to Ms. Zanna Alvarez. In first grade, this student displays many characteristics of an exceptional citizen. He frequently volunteers to help with both everyday classroom jobs and additional duties. He maintains a positive attitude every day and always shows respect to both his teachers and classmates. Additionally, this student actively participates in classroom activities and is always remembers to follow the rules of both our school and classroom. Way to go, Ricky from Ms. Yarmalux's class. We are thrilled to recognize this student for outstanding display of good citizenship in second grade. This student consistently shows kindness and respect to classmates, always willing to lend a helping hand and share a smile. Her positive attitude and willingness to follow classroom rules set up a wonderful example for others. This student embodies the true spirit of community and cooperation. Keep up the fantastic work, Riley. Your efforts make our classroom a better place for everyone. Congratulations to Riley. This student in third grade is nominated for the Good Citizenship Award for being a wonderful student that sets a great example for her classmates. They are respectful and kind and get along well with everyone. She is always ready and willing to lend a helping hand. She works hard at everything she does and has made great progress toward all learning goals in third grade. She comes to school every day prepared with a positive attitude and follows the rules of our classroom and our school. She thinks carefully about problems and comes up with creative and unique solutions. It has been my joy and pleasure to be the student's teacher this year. I look forward to seeing how far her good citizenship skills take her. Amani is a wonderful young lady and it is an honor to have her represent third grade. Congratulations, Amani. Fourth grade would like to nominate this student for demonstrating outstanding qualities of kindness, responsibility, respect, and leadership throughout the school year. This student has been an exemplary member of our classroom community, always showing consideration for others, helping classmates, and making a positive contribution to the school environment. Her actions reflect the true spirit of good citizenship, and she sets a wonderful example for others to follow. Congratulations, Noel, on your dedication and positive impact. Noel, congratulations. Okay, in fifth grade, here we go. This student is an amazing young leader. She always actively participates in class discussions and has insightful ideas to share. She is a talented artist and writer, the vice president of our Class 4H Club, and has recently been accepted into our venture program. More than those things, though, she exudes citizenship in our classroom. She is a hard worker and model student. When she doesn't understand something, she asks questions to support her understanding. She is always willing to help, adults and students alike. She often naturally acts as a bridge between students who normally wouldn't work together because of their differences and leads communication and collaboration in a small group. Congratulations to Callie from fifth grade. Thank you, City Council. We appreciate it. Good job, everybody. Congratulations. And just before everybody goes, just wanted to say thank you to Dennis and Kiara Laws for the gift cards that they handed out this evening, the Philly Cheese Steak Spot.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Great work. Great work.
I'd like to ask if it can sync the words she's saying. She's talking and she's way... Do you notice it's not synced? On the monitor? No, don't.
Mr. Hofstadter, you're on. Presentation of the February Monthly Report for Public Works Department, including sanitation.
Just a few seconds, because I'm very messy and I don't have my glasses. This is the first report that I'm doing, so it's a little bit different. But going forward, we have to have a lot of project updates with pictures and quarter progress and things like that. This one is a little bit different, probably will be a little bit quicker, I think, than the former ones. But we still got a lot of good stuff in here. We need slide... Do I like to say, like, change a slide or something? Okay.
It's not matching up, yes?
No, it's fine. I just wanted to make sure. I didn't know if everybody could see everything. The very first thing that we have is our work order progress that we've had. We've had a work order system in place called IWork that we've recently been working on to try to revamp it so that we can track the numbers a lot better, organize the workflow a little bit better. And this is kind of the result of the initial parts of that. There's still a lot of work to go, but all of the guys have been making a lot of progress on doing this. And the other part is the utility billing work order system, which is sanitation, work orders, and water. As you can see, I used half of December through January since we were starting this. But ninety-three completed IWork maintenance work orders, with sixteen still open, seventy utility billing with eight open, so one hundred and sixty-three total with twenty-four open. So, do I need to explain what I... What is included with IWork and utility billing? And asking questions after each page throughout this, too, would be a little bit easier for me, I think. But the IWork work orders, essentially, it's anything that's not routine for the public works and sanitation guys. If they're on a schedule to clean a restroom two days a week, that's not on here. If they get called out because there's graffiti or something happened in the restroom, that will be a work order. That will be on here. Anything when I'm riding around, Chris is riding around, and we see any issues with stormwater in the parks, on the streets, and they get called to do it, that's a work order. And we have several... The other people in this room have access to the system, too, and they can go in there and request anything from repair my desk, my furniture, to move upstairs to downstairs, and anything like that. Utility billing, sanitation will be missed orders or my can needs repair, something like that. The water is usually water leaks, meter repairs, things like that, that people get caught in from. Sanitation, we are actually starting them in IWork as well, but that's going to be for the vehicle tracking of maintenance and repairs so that we can track each vehicle, how much we're spending on it, how often we have to do maintenance and repair on them. It's kind of part of the fleet management programs. But we're starting that now, but it will be on the next report for the next month. Any other questions on that? He's in charge. So, the highlights, I wanted to highlight the sanitation one on the left. I know the sanitation department was started. A lot of it had to do with customer service purposes. So, we went back, tracked the numbers of all complaints and comments that we've had throughout the years. And you can see on there the last year that we were with the previous contractor. It was two hundred and eighteen complaints, I guess. Maybe not all complaints, but most of them probably are. The first year that we did sanitation went down to two oh four. This year, within six months, we're at forty-eight. So, so far, between one year to the second year, we're fifty percent better, I think, in our customer service and how efficient that we're getting.
That's awesome.
I just wanted to put that out there because we're continually still getting better with two staff still down, two positions still open. So, I think we're doing very well. Last month, we had promotions. Public Works Maintenance Supervisor, Chris Schaefer. Sanitation Supervisor, Jeff Durham. And Team Lead, Streets and Water, Tim Brown. And Team Lead for Parks and Facilities, Mason Knowles. We kind of split the public works into two different crews so they could focus on parks because it needs a lot of attention as well as the streets, but we got more actual focus on a routine basis on these things. And then they still work together to do a lot of projects. And they have been busy. Oh, yeah, training. Jeff Durham, our sanitation supervisor, just got his Class A CDL license. We require Class B, but he went a little step farther and got his Class A. And just last week, Michael Brune got his CDL B. So, now we have two CDL drivers in sanitation now. Class Four Water, which is something we use in the water program. Chris Schaefer's already certified. Tim Brown and Jeff signed up to take this class and get certified before he was promoted, but he's still going to go through it. So, we'll have more Class Four Water certification employees soon. And Tim Brown is also Stormwater Inspector Red Card Certification, to inspect stormwater drains and things like that. Any questions on those? Because we're also working on a training program and all the certifications that are required and that we want for the employees to start working towards. So, we have professional development programs, training programs, and things they can work toward as they grow with us.
I have a question.
Yes.
As it relates to training, does that allow them the opportunity to get... to earn merit pay?
Yes. Yes, some of them already do. And then we'll continually talk about some of the others as we grow, especially on the park side. There are several there that's applicable. But right now, the CDL, the stormwater and the water, for sure. All right. The next slide, I got some projects that are in the works. I'll talk about half of them real quick. I don't want to steal Cliff's thunder because I know he's going to talk about a lot of them. But I got a couple. At the Seventy-six Seaboard Street, the landscape, we did some landscaping out there. We took out the old bell road ties, retaining walls, and rebuilt them with brick, with some fencing. It looks really nice, graded out above it, flattened out an area for the summer camp, picnic tables and things like that for camp back there. And also did the same thing to the front of the building. Rebuilt a retaining wall, rebuilt another part and recreated, and took out all the shrubs and the trees so that we can feel free to landscape however we want to, if we want to. But currently, as of right now, it looks really nice as is. And it should be much safer as well. The roof, next week, March fifth, is the date for that to be replaced. The Well Number One Downtown Replacement, that was approved. Should be happening soon. I just don't have a firm date on that yet. The parks are being ordered. The tennis court and basketball resurfacing at Ben Hill Strickland Park is going to happen in April, possibly May. And this is just filling in the cracks, repainting the surfaces, and adding some pickleball lines to the tennis courts for now. And that should get us by a couple of years, I think, before we have to think about more work that gets done out there. We got the public works. They're still working on the public workshop and yard cleanup. And the next report will have lots of pictures of that because it's a huge difference and it's going to be a lot more in the next month. And also brush clearing and doing some safety things at Ben Hill Strickland Park. Those are in the works. We have other things that we're trying to plan. I just don't have... I can't say they're in the works yet. But we're talking about it. I'm getting estimates and trying to figure out. Like, the Nebo Road deep patch, we're still in discussions with other cities of how they do it and sections, things like that. We just don't have a plan for that yet, but we are working on that one. And we completed several things as well over the last couple of months. Fence repairs, fixed the fountain, partially fixed the fountain, it's at least working, at Ben Hill Strickland Park. Built some new benches ordered for downtown on Bailey Street. They're just not out there yet. But they're... I think we have one more to put together. Vehicles that you approved last time to be disposed are on Gov Auction, Gov deals right now. And we have several bids already on both the Crown Victoria and the dump truck. We kind of completed the fitness area underneath this building for the PD. I've been doing lots of trainings of myself with the maintenance crews, playground inspections and different things, in addition to them going out and getting the extra training. And we've really been looking at the playgrounds because there's a lot of repairs and a lot of replacement parts that are needed. So, that's in works right now, too, and there's been quite a few.
I have a question.
Yes.
Is there a plan to fix the fence around Ben Hill Strickland?
Yes, we are definitely discussing it. And I hope to talk about at least the initial parts of Ben Hill Strickland maybe next time around with the report. But yes. No, there's no plans. Sorry. There's definite discussions.
So, I would love for you to incorporate some ideas for those who are physically challenged. There is some equipment that Mayor Moran, he gave me a booklet, and it showed benches. There's a padded area, paved area where the old playground existed. And I believe a pavilion was something that we approved. Previous council approved it, right? A pavilion? We did, right? So, if we can get some ADA compliant, not compliant, but benches that are, you know, accessible to all. And there are also swing sets that are accessible for those who are in wheelchairs so they can engage and enjoy the park.
Yes, yep.
That would be awesome.
Definitely can do that. The... What else I got on here? Oh, the... And again, one hundred and sixty-three work orders. I'm constantly... All them about work orders and adding more and more to their plate. And since Chris has taken over as the public works supervisor, he's been very, very good riding around the city, noticing things, and putting in work orders and having the guys do projects and then putting them in after the fact. So, he's kind of on top of it. And he's adding more detail. If I was to print a report, it could show you how many labor hours from all the employees were spending on certain maintenance projects, how many hours we're using for equipment, how much material that we're using. So, we're not a hundred percent on all those details yet, but we're getting there to where we could print out full reports that shows lots of detail on all the work that's being done. That's it. So, the next part is just, since we've reorganized a little bit, just a quick overview, more bullet points of the little divisions within public works, what are the little areas that we're responsible for and what is done. And if we're not doing it now, we're definitely trying our best to put together plans that will get us in a better place so that we can accomplish everything on here, if that makes sense. So, and sanitation is included in here as public works as well. We'll get to that one in a minute. On the streets, you know, we care for the streets and the sidewalks, the streetscapes, the amenities that go along with that, tree trimming, the right-of-way maintenance, line of sight, all those kind of go together. But it's basically trimming the trees back so you can see better. So, my truck doesn't hit the trees coming out of the industrial place. They fixed that one recently, but I hit those trees every time I made that right-hand turn. Street lights and poles, constant... Since I've been here on day one, I've been on Georgia Power about these streetlights and poles. And it's a process and it's complicated. It shouldn't be, but it is. But we're constantly improving the lighting as well. Any graffiti debris removal, fleet maintenance. We're getting better at that, I guess, as far as paying attention to our equipment. And we're trying to spend some money and get everything up to par. That's tractors, lawn mowers, including the trucks that we drive. And any special projects that are out there. Stormwater is exactly the same thing, trying to keep the ditches clean, keep them mowed, make sure that we're not... When it rains real hard, we don't have flooding. You know, I think two weeks ago, I think it was, that's probably what they spent almost a whole week on, was stormwater work. So, the control water runoff. We hope to be able to sweep and clean streets really efficiently one day. The retention detention ponds, it's all with our MS4 certification, which is the stormwater infrastructure, like the ponds that's back here, the one at Harris Drive. Those all serve very good purposes, so it's keeping those maintained. And any equipment that goes along with that and making sure that we have the certifications that go along with it as well. The water, we do meter readings every day. Work orders for service calls and work orders, the water samples we send out for the EPD and the environmental certifications that we have. Well inspection and repairs, repair meters and line maintenance pump operation, chemical management, and any certifications that go along with that. And not all of this is all stuff they do themselves. Sometimes we contract these things out, but still, it's kind of under the responsibility. We need to know that we need things addressed and we need to ask for help with it. The facilities, upkeep and safety of the city facilities, routine restroom checks, scheduled facility cleans, inspect the fire, smoke, AED, HVAC systems, making sure they're maintained and operable. Landscaping and lighting around the facilities, any light construction. We could do painting, patching holes, whatever that we can get done. Maintaining the parking lots, probably going to be working toward taking more responsibility, I think, probably for IT and security things in the future, and any future planning for facilities. Getting heavily involved with that. Mainly so we know, we make sure that... I want the public works to be involved with it so they can have input on how they can maintain the facility and not get surprised. We'd really like to create some kind of standards for facilities. In the parks, whether that's fixtures, utility, lighting, whatever, so that we have whatever we fix in this building, we can do the same thing in the next building when something is wrong. It's not different toilets, different sinks, different all that. Sanitation collects trash. They've started bulk collection.
When did we start that?
The bulk collection, has that been a month ago, maybe? About a month ago?
In January?
Yeah, they do that on Mondays.
How does it work? I haven't heard anything about it.
They call in if they have something, and we schedule it the following Monday, depending on which Monday falls, because the first and the third is the yard debris and the second is the lardine. So, if they call us on the first week, then it's the second week. If it's yard debris, we pick them up, you know, the third week. But if it's a lardine, we pick them up on the second week.
So, it's a call and request?
Yes, and if there's a fee associated with it, it's charged to their account, and they can pay for it at that time, or it comes back to us and then we bill it and all their next payments.
Okay, thank you.
It was a really easy process. I took advantage of that and it's so reasonably priced for the citizens. So, very happy for that. So, thank you, you team.
Those are all on Mondays right now, correct?
All on Monday right now.
Truck maintenance, they're doing more truck maintenance now than they've done in the past. It's more than just greasy now that we're focusing on cleaning. We've had service out there on the trucks quite often recently to make sure that everything, all the back work that needed done, that we're catching up. And so, they'll be spending a lot more time maintaining trucks and cleaning trucks in the afternoon, more than the half a day a week that they were doing. When we have time to do it. I know right now, we still only have the three employees up right now. But can deliveries, pickup, service call work orders. Like I said, we do require CDL to be CDL, to be a driver. So, if they don't have the CDL, then they work, but they don't get to drive in the truck. But we have two of the three right now have the certifications. And in the parks, this is... I've had them focusing a lot on the parks lately and since we've split up. And this one's just going to be more and more and more. I'm the parks guy. I can't help it. But we're going to do it. But Mason and his guys, they inspect and repair playgrounds, courts, fences, pavilions, ponds, paths, trails. Basically, if there's any landscape and any amenities, anything within the park boundaries, they're responsible for and they're inspecting it. I've gone through, trained them on playground inspections, some stormwater inspections, and all these different things that they shouldn't be keeping their eye out on. And they're doing a good job with it. It's just as we add more parks, it's just them keeping up with it. And then I'm involved in them as well with any capital improvement, master plans, ideas, anything like that. And there are multiple certifications that you can get in the park world, too. We're just not really that necessary right now, but they will be. That was a very quick overview on that. Any questions?
No, I wish I would have signed up for this before taking a six-hour class. This gave me everything that I needed to understand everything that you all do. I took a six-hour class and you covered everything. That was awesome. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael.
Yep, and I'll be back up here soon.
Public participation, no one signed up for public participation this evening. Old business, discuss employee retirement plans. Bob, you have something on that? Kathy, there we go.
First, I wanted to thank everybody for their questions and everything. I guess everybody received the email that was sent out with the recorded conversations that we had with GMA. I think that they presented everything that I'm hoping answered everybody's questions. And if you still have questions, please let me know. They said they would be available to answer any additional questions before, you know, anything is decided on this next week.
Is that when you're going to take a vote?
Well, I'm hoping that next week y'all have it on your vote to go ahead with the decision as how you want to move forward. So, my goal is, is if the consensus is that y'all do want to make the vote next week, I'm going to get in touch with the attorney that is handling the referendum so I can make sure that the vote goes with the wording that needs to be on the referendum also.
Kathy, the only thing that I wanted to bring up, and you and I've talked about it, is having a delay exit under the new retirement. You go into a new retirement and somebody's eligible two weeks later. You go into a new retirement and somebody's eligible two weeks later, they've not put any of their own money into the retirement. In other jurisdictions that I'm familiar with, they've included a clause that says you have to be in the retirement system for two years before you can go ahead and retire at the new benefit. And that's to make sure they got some, some skin in the game, so to speak, that I'm going to get some of my money back by staying in this program. So I, my suggestion is, is we put a clause in there that, my, my recommendation would be a two-year clause before they can retire under the new system that we go with.
How many, I'm sorry, I just wanted to ask, how many employees do we have that are eligible or would be eligible within that timeframe?
Well, if you're looking at tenure employees that are eligible to retire at the current fifty-five, we have several already. But nobody can justifiably do that because you're not eligible for any kind of medical insurance and our retirement doesn't offer medical insurance. So that really doesn't play out at this point. Age-wise, we probably have a total of four that could retire because they're already either getting over sixty or getting close to over sixty-two. As far as years of service, because we're doing the, if we do with the three-point-six multiplier, it's got a twenty-five-year cap. And right now we only currently have Captain Wilson, that is at, I believe, twenty-one years. So I don't see, foresee him leaving just because it goes into place because I feel like he's going to push for three more years just so he gets the full max of retirement, just because of his age also, and he still wouldn't be Medicare eligible. We don't have a medical benefit. So for anybody to go ahead and retire prior to being sixty-five and Medicare eligible, they would have to provide their own medical insurance. So currently at our one-point-five multiplier, an employee couldn't even really afford medical insurance. And even if you have a sixty-five-year-old employee that's worked only five years and is vested, even at that three-point-six, that years of service is not a whole lot of retirement, even at three-point-six multiplier because it's the years of service that's going to drive up that amount of money that they're going to be bringing home each month. Now, I appreciate the idea of the, the two years and everything as far as the reason. But employees have been working long tenure already with just a one-point-five percent multiplier with no financial input because that's the way originally the retirement was set up. But employees have remained, to me, an employment, an employee that shows longevity, no matter what the benefits have been over the years, which we just recently, in the last four years, have really improved on employee benefits. And to think that you have employees that have been here fourteen to twenty-one years, knowing that for the ten, fifteen years of those previous years, their insurance had three-thousand-dollar deductibles, their mo, their retirement was only at a one-point-five, I think they do have skin in the game. I think that they've been here because they have been trying to improve the city, not for themselves, but for the residents of the city. So, I mean, it is up to you as far as the way you want to vote on this, as far as what kind of restrictions you want to put on it or anything. But the three-point-six multiplier really doesn't get to be a huge dollar amount unless you've been making a decent salary for five or more years. And if you think back to the, when we only did the ten percent increase and the twenty percent for PD, that was only three years ago. So when you average that five years of their highest salary before that jump, it still is not that big of a salary difference when you figure out that average salary for that highest five years and multiply it by the years of service. So as far as those that would really retire and benefit from a three-point-six multiplier, if they walked out within two weeks, I don't see it being that much of a dollar amount change just because of the years of service not being more than twenty. And then also the salary range that would be considered, calculated for that calculation, the average would be still less than if they stayed four more years and had really got a good five years' worth of salary.
So if I, just want to make sure I understand, so if someone were to want to retire, you know, the next day after this were implemented.
If somebody were eligible.
Eligible.
They would immediately draw the three-point-six?
Right, but they would have already been working for the city for?
Over five years.
Oh, over five years.
So they do technically have skin in the game.
But they're not paying into the retirement now?
I contacted GMA after talking to you about it just to get an idea of what they, if we, if that was to go through. And if, if it was to go through with, say, an effective date July first and an employee decided to retire in September, from July first through September, they would still get whatever the multiplier was, the new multiplier, say two-point-five or three-point-six. Prior to July first, if you said you wanted that two-year limit, then they would get the old rate. They're unable to, it's considered like a manual adjustment, so they would not be able to say, up until that retirement date, they still are at that old rate. They would have to give them from that date to the retirement date. So that two months would be at the three-point-six and anything prior to that would be the one-point-five. Anybody higher after that July first, no matter when they leave, as long as they're funded, they get their five years vesting, then they would always be at the new multiplier.
And also to, to add to that, the current plan is funded as well. And when we went through this talk with Michelle and in the paperwork, it is, if I'm reading this right, one-point-six million in that retirement account.
Right, that we already are.
To debt. So just to put that out there, that there's money in that bank already from the previous years of funding.
How will this impact recruitment and retention of our employees or potential employees?
I think as far as recruitment, it's going to be beneficial just because we've already seen the difference in just the salary increases that we've added and the benefits and the changes in medical coverage as far as lower deductibles and everything. And I think once you add that retirement benefit, I don't think that they're going to be considered as, concerned as much. If, if the referendum said no social security, if the majority vote goes that way, fifty-one percent goes that way, I don't think they're going to be as worried about that as much as knowing that they can actually earn more money at a twenty-five years of service and earn ninety percent of their pay, which would be more than social security will ever pay. I don't think they'll be too concerned about that and I think that would be the thing that would drive them home to, you know, to come in here and work and stay long. Because like I said, you could stay ten years, but your benefit is going to be the longer you stay. That multiplier of those years is going to drive that dollar amount up. So longevity is what's the driving force, also along with a good multiplier.
And I, I would add too that it's, you're right now at sixty-five or sixty-seven. So you're also having that, that sixty making the new retirement age where I'm not here until I'm sixty-seven just because I have to.
Right.
Um, by then, for me, it'll be over thirty years of service. So you're probably going to want some, some new skin by then, I would imagine, in my chair and rightfully so, you know, some new talent and stuff. So wanted to add that in as well. You're not making those folks just stay because they've got to sit in that chair and, and wait.
And I can personally say, I'm one of the individuals that could actually go the very next day it's voted in. But I know for a fact that I am one of those that is looking for the long-term longer just so I can get that salary line back up to where it's a decent average for five years. I, I mean, I can speak for myself personally in that aspect. Because I want to be able to maximize my retirement, but have it actually reflect the efforts that I put into my job too, as far as my years of service, you know, and my pay. So I can't speak for everybody, but personally, I wouldn't walk out the next day. I'd stay as long until y'all said, Kathy, you got to go, you're, you're having. You've got cobwebs under your chair now, you know? But that's just the way I personally feel. So, and I can't speak for everybody. But, because, because the other part of that is, I mean, you do have people that are going to be going out medically, maybe possibly, that's within that two years, that would be considered a medically disability. We don't have a disability retirement. So if somebody did have to go out medically, that's another thing you need to consider. They would, you would penalize them because they would not be drawing any income from us, they would be drawing a retirement. So it kind of affects their pay calculations also because it wouldn't be considered work income if they go out on a long-term disability. So they would, they would not benefit, they wouldn't receive the benefit of the council's kindness of going with a higher multiplier if it, the majority voted that way. Does that make sense?
Well, yeah, the one thing that makes sense now is when you said if somebody does go out a week after, they would only get that short period of time of three-point-six, you would be back at the one-point-five.
That's if, that's if you put a limit. If you require, if you, if you were to vote as a council to put that two-year or one year or six months or whatever you decide to do, then it would default to what they call an A plus B factor. So you would have the years of service up until that date plus the years of service after the effective date. So that after the effective date would be at the new multiplier and the other would be up until that day, the old multiplier. But that's only if you put some type of a limit. If there's no limit like they said on the conference, if you just go ahead and you just vote that that's the effective date that we put in the referendum and it will take place, then it's an immediate thing at that point.
Any other questions? Thank you, Kathy.
You're welcome.
Discuss twenty-four, twenty-five mid-year budget amendments, Jackie?
I just wish they could make these better.
Hi, y'all. In your packet was the two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five mid-year budget amendments. And included in that was that we are increasing free general fund revenue accounts. One was for the insurance reimbursements and that was for vehicle losses. Another revenue received was for the loan from Magnolia Bank and that was to pay for the five police explorers. And then the other, the other revenue item was police revenue and that was for police donations. So that revenue is going to be offsetting some of these expenditures. In the general fund, as I just said, we bought five police explorers and that was used against the revenue that we just got from the Magnolia Bank loan. Let me see, we are over budget in the administration department, but that's mostly due to the professional services. And that was for the GMEB's retirement cost study, the twelve-acre survey. And we're going to be taking four thousand seven hundred and thirty-five where we have actually gone over budget. We're going to take four thousand seven hundred and thirty-five from the public works department because they are actually under budget. Other budget amendments are washed out in each, in the other departments, so that's more or less in each department, moving it from one of their GL numbers into another of their GL numbers in that department. So that's just washing out. The hotel motel was budgeted for eighty-four thousand for tourism. Now that we know that's specifically for Old Town Hiram Business Association, so I was moving eighty-four thousand from, from the tourism to actually Old Town Business Association. The water fund and the sanitation is just moving a few expenditures around in their own departments just to make that balance. You got any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jackie. Discuss dates for City of Hiram events for twenty-twenty-five, Kathy?
Okay, we're having vendors and starting to reach out to us, trying to get dates so they can go ahead and block out because they love coming to our events. We also have to set the date for the fireworks and everything for the red, white and boom. So looking at the calendar, excuse me, I had put down the Saturday, June twenty-eighth because we usually do it the Saturday before the Fourth of July, and this year the Fourth is on a Friday. So we really don't want to do it that weekend of the Fourth. So it was my recommendation that we go ahead and schedule it for the twenty-eighth. We also had discussion, myself and Jody, after last year's event when we had the massive heat stroke at the very last minute. Possibly bumping the date from time from six PM to seven PM start. It's a little bit cooler, the sun is already starting to move down a little bit. So our event time will be seven PM to ten PM. If y'all are okay with that. The annual tree lighting, this past year was the first year that we actually scheduled it for a Saturday. From public works standard, from what I've understood, it was a, it actually came around a lot easier. It was a breeze as far as getting everything set up, having vendors set up, having the customers know that they need to be out of the parking lots and stuff at a certain time. It was a lot easier with City Hall not being open on a Friday with everything. The logistics of the entire thing being on a Saturday was a lot better. Thank you. So the recommendation of possibly doing it again on a Saturday, that is strictly up to y'all. But the date for the first Saturday was December sixth. And keeping the times the same, six PM to nine PM. New Year's Eve, of course, we can't change the date on that one. So this, it doesn't allow, but actually keeping it from eight to midnight with the fireworks at nine and at midnight. And if y'all are good with those dates and everything, then I can let vendors know.
What date did you say for Christmas, the Christmas tree going?
December sixth.
Saturday, December sixth.
Do we know if Dallas is doing the invitational parade?
They usually do.
I didn't get that date because that's where we ran that conflict last.
It was just, it was just that public works couldn't do it, but I think y'all still participated in the parade and everything. And I don't believe there was any.
Conflict.
Conflict of times or anything.
Okay.
As we started in the evening. It just allowed us to have the ability to set up without all the, still having to do business during the day on a Friday plus having to make sure that the businesses that normally are busy on Fridays are cleared out of the areas. It was just, it worked a lot better with the road closure.
It also had to do with the availability of a trailer for a float design. We did not have the, the additional trailer available at that time. I mean, we're, we're working toward rectifying that situation as well. And we will take all kinds of volunteer help from the council on the creation of the float. So Derek, bring your hammer.
And with the increase of our staff and our public works and our sanitation department too, we'll have this year the extra manpower if we need public works to assist with the parade. Where if you think this past Christmas, I think we were down to just three public works individuals. So, so it made it very hard to try to spread them thinner than they could, had to be, so.
I think it also helps that you pushed it from six PM to seven PM start times.
That's for the red, white and boom.
Oh, no, that's red, white and boom.
Yeah, and that's more of a suggestion just because of the heat. And if you were there at six o'clock, we really didn't have a whole lot of people there at six o'clock. And in addition to that, it shortens the length of time as far as entertainment, inflatable rentals, you know, and all that, so it helps us.
Kathy, you still going to have the dual fireworks for red?
New Year's Eve, yes, nine o'clock and midnight.
Okay.
Yeah. I think the very first year, we did it at eight and midnight and it just seemed like there was a long gap that a lot of people left and then it just like cleared out. This past year doing it nine and midnight, it cleared out after the nine o'clock, but it didn't seem like it got as vacant as it did the first year. We still had a steady stream of people and then we got that flux of people right there right before midnight again.
Okay, thanks, Kathy.
All right, thank you, sir.
Discuss proposal for renovations and updates at Homer Lake Park, Michael?
I think the, the attachment I gave you guys had a few extra slides on it. I clipped too much, but it's fine because it kind of talks about kind of the approach that I'm taking towards the park planning and eventual master planning of the parks. Since they're on here, we can go over that as well.
It may not be.
Soon as we get the, you don't have it?
I just took your presentation. I didn't go into your items. Or do you, or that?
Okay, yeah.
So that's the end of your presentation.
Okay, that's fine. Does anybody have a printout of?
I have it.
Okay. All right. So usually when I go, when I go into thinking about the, the parks long-term and, and what we need, a lot of it starts first with kind of the approach you see there with, start off with fix, fix what needs fixing now. Try to address that. So it's kind of a four-part fix, build, preserve, connect. It's kind of my, my four options. And I don't think I showed you this earlier, Jody. Again, extra slides, but it never hurts. So let's talk about fixing first. Fixing really is addressing all the deferred maintenance needs that are, that are there now. If I can use just Ben Hill Strickland alone, there's, there's a lot of things that we need to get up to date. Some of it's small and some of it is larger projects. But it's trying to figure out what we need across the entire. But it's trying to figure out what we need across the entire system, which for, for this presentation right here is for Ben Hill and Homer Leggett Park. And I'm starting with Homer Leggett Park first because it's much simpler projects, I think, that can be done. It's managed in-house, less funds and less consultants. It's something quick that I think that we can turn around. And then with, with that, with the fixing, it's identifying the workforce needs and develop a comprehensive maintenance plan. Kind of started that now. The only, I guess staffing wise, we, we've just kind of split the crews right now. But as we go into this with the maintenance plan and adding, adding parks and as we're redoing parks, it's going to require a little bit more maintenance down the road. So it may be asking for more staff or something else along those lines. But that's what that means is what, what do we need to maintain what we have now? That's the big thing for fix, right? And then build, renovate, let's build, let's make sure we're addressing all of the needs through what people have wanted in surveys and public meetings and what are the trends out there? What do we not have in the city right now? What can we add? Those kind of things. So let's just, let's just build. I know hopefully Gray's Mill Park, we can start planning that soon. And then I think that will address a lot. So fix Ben Hill, build Gray's Mill. And then with that, with development, it's preserving, kind of the nature, preserving the woods and environment that we have now. Ben Hill, Strickland, for an example, is, it's a watershed, a lot of stormwater, a lot of trees, a lot of woods and a lot of environment. So as we, we need to protect that. And then as we build other parks as well, we're going to be creating some of that that we need to maintain. So just always being conscientious, conscientious of that as well. Try to be as nature as we can be. Like you have, you have an urban park, you have a nature park, we got a dog park, we got different kinds. But just not, not too much development when it comes to tearing down the trees and stuff. But the overall big plan of everything would, will be to connect all of the parks, all of the community landmarks, neighborhoods, businesses, schools, sidewalks, trails, making sure, in the parks world, we always like to say, are you a ten-minute walk from a park and you leave your living room within ten minutes walk to a park of some sort? So it's kind of having that mindset as we redo roads, rebuild parks, ask developments to come in and what kind of concessions do we want from them? Any of those things to make sure that we can create some connectivity. So on to the fix. Homer Leggett Park is the very first proposal that, that I'm putting in front of you. And after it will be, then this document is going to be very huge at some point, but this is the first part. Like I said, Homer Leggett Park, it, it doesn't need a lot, but it does need work. And I think it's one that we can do fairly quickly. On the, no slide, sorry. If you look down the page, where it says upgrading, reconfiguration, I put most requested items. Some of that is talking to people, it's talking to staff. I spend some time out there quite often, but it's also from working on similar projects in other cities throughout the years and just experience and looking at master plans and things too. Typically, when the main four things that people really want in any park, especially the dog parks, is water, clean restrooms, seating and shading. That's, that's the highest priority. There's other things. So I kind of wanted to address this in that order and then add the optional things. I'll address the proposal in the slides. I have an overview map, a kind of, kind of drawing of what the first proposal is. And just real quick, I know there might be questions with this one. It is to rent, to update and renovate the restrooms that are there. They are, they're, they're very outdated and hard to maintain. We need to add some, some doors and some, some locks and some more security, that kind of thing. But it's just really making nice inviting restrooms. Because not only do the dog park users use it, the Silver Comet Trail is right there and it gets a lot of use, a lot of traffic just going to the restrooms. I put on here, Georgia power lights can be relocated for the new small dog park if we were to relocate it. That may or may not be necessary, but I think it might be, so I just put it on there to move them across the walking path. But essentially where the small dog park is now underneath the trees, it, it's a kind of a nightmare. It's muddy. The shade is nice, but it's, it's just kind of worn out and it's not a good spot to run and play for the dogs. Over people to even sit there with the mosquitoes and everything else. And there's a large spot right behind the restrooms. We'd like to take the current fencing, we could take, use most of it and relocate the small dog park behind the restrooms in that field where the small playground used to be. Relocate the entrances together closer to the, to the restrooms. So it's more convenient and access to the restrooms, access to the concession stand if we hopefully get a vendor there for the summertime. And then that leaves that shaded area back there, we can put some picnic benches, we can do some, some other things that, there's some shade there. But within the dog park, if you see the drawing, there's either gravel or concrete pad at the entrance. There's that a little bit on both sides of the fence where we could put some shade cells and some picnic benches underneath. And then some more benches along the fence line or anywhere in there for, for extra seating. With some of this renovation that's not on here that we can do in-house, probably is installing some French drains around the building because when it rains, it does flood a little bit. And we, if we add that concrete pad there, it's probably going to collect some water too. So we can French drain around it before the fencing and before the park opens up just to make sure that it can be dry out there and we can have the grass grow better as we try to grow it. Any questions on that? I don't, I don't think the small dog park now gets used that often.
No, they actually bring the small dogs into the big dog park.
Right.
Yeah.
And there's not, and there's not a problem with the large dog, dog park and the small dog, dog park being connected like that with the fence down the middle, especially if you separate it with some amenities there. But I don't think it's used that often. It might get used more and it might not. It's hard to say honestly. But the dog, the large park, I know that, that one gets used quite often as is right now. But I think it'll get used more because it'll be more accessible. And then a lot, a lot of what I found with the dog parks too, it's not really about the dog too much. It's about what do you, are you building for the dog owners that sit there and want to have their conversations and come with their friends and sit and talk and hang out in the shade and drink water while their dogs run? And that's really the most important thing at any dog park I've been associated with. Even more than the amenities and things, which those are fun too. But I think that's the biggest thing, they, they sit and talk and have a nice place to do that. Close to the restrooms, close to concessions, I hope, and close to parking.
Hey, Michael, you going to discuss the installation of the pole barn at Duncan Circle?
Am I? I'm not finished yet, but.
Oh, you're not done? Well, while you're up here, when you're done, just slide right in.
I'll probably be up here all night. Sorry. The, the next slide though, I just wanted to go into kind of what goes in to each part of this. And it's kind of in order of what I think anyway is most important to the least important and potential cost. Again, I keep forgetting, you can't see it up there, sorry. So the, for the restrooms and relocating the fence, again, that's fully renovating, securing the restroom facilities, the new dog fountain, fountains, the French drain, any other exterior painting, roofing and nails on the roof, replacing the gutters, any concession renovations we might need to do for a vendor. Probably, probably around eighty, eighty or less, probably maybe, maybe a little less. But I think these, I'm just not sure about the French drain and what that will cost us. But the, the numbers you see there, I think are fairly accurate of what it would cost to renovate the restrooms and do the work that's needed. And the shade cells, sorry, the shade and the seating is on, is the next slide over to add that. And I think these are fairly accurate as well. And then what, if you do that, I mean, you kind of have a nice dog park already. But because we have the walking path and we have other things that could be done, I added some options in here. Replacing, we're going to, we're going to take out the, the equipment that's there now, at least most of it, just because it's broken. We have to remove it. And there's a couple of good pieces that are still in there, but not really used that much. But there's some benches, trash cans, just everything matches. And it's just a few amenities that I think they could, dogs like to jump, they like to hop more than anything. So kind of thinking about that with what we added for the amenities, but still give lots of room to run around and to be free. Just to run without all the equipment being in the way. And also for the small dog park as well, a few pieces in there. And that, with installation and everything, I put in there eighteen thousand two hundred and twenty-eight. That's probably pretty accurate, I would think. So the next part is fitness equipment because I know it's been, been a topic of something that might be wanted out there. It's also would be great for Ben Hill Strickland Park, so it's either or or half and half or something like that. But I have like a full proposal in here for cost for equipment. And that includes static fitness station, or that is just pull-ups, push-ups, things like that where the machines don't move. That can be located somewhere near the shaded tree area and then some other fitness pieces, treadmill, bench press, things like that to go around the walking trail.
That is awesome. I think you're going to make so many families happy out here, just thinking that you're going to involve.
It's a great place for it. Right, even today when I'm out there walking, taking more pictures, there's people walking the trail doing their push-ups and things anyway, so.
And it complements the trail.
So around eighty for that, if we wanted surfacing underneath the equipment, that's kind of a, it's recommended, but not, don't have to have it. And what they're, what the recommendation here is like to pour it in place, rubber surfacing so that we can maintain around it. And it's soft for seniors and children if they were to fall. Concrete might be a little too hard and the mulch just kind of gets nasty. So I think it's either we do something like this with that surfacing or just leave the grass underneath it. But that's, that's probably equal what I have in there for like ten-five and ten-nine to install it. So it's, that could be a little bit of savings or we could just do it and, and make it nice. And I got that, that's phase two or three. Like I said, restrooms, seating, shading, the dog amenities or fitness, either one of those in a priority. But so the full cost, I didn't put it together, but we can add, I'm thinking, I don't know what I did, I don't remember, I didn't add it up. Hundred and eighty, something like that?
Two hundred and fifty, twenty-five.
Less than two hundred, you know, we can totally renovate the park and maybe make a statement. But one thing I would like to do is with, if we renovate the restrooms and add signage and everything, is, is to start to create like a brand, like, like the same kind of signage, the same fixtures in the restrooms. Anything that we do, like if you're Homer Leggett, if you go to Ben, if you go to Gray's Mill when it's built, even though they all look different, you know you're in the City of Hiram Park. And our maintenance guys and operation wise, like I said, they can go from facility to facility and easily be able to maintain each thing that we do, if we do everything the same way. We could start it off right here. Next time, start talking about Ben Hill Strickland Park. I do have an idea for like a phase one that's mostly for maintenance and operation needs more than anything before we really get into talking about the big needs there. Any more questions about this? I think what I really need is just some direction of what I should go for next or how do you want to start the process of, of working out there?
You seem to have a.
Pieces or all of it? Is that what?
Awesome.
Thank you, Michael.
All right.
Michael? Come back over here. Discuss the installation of the pole barn at eighty-three Duncan Circle. You guys are twins, I couldn't tell you apart.
In your packet, beginning on page thirty-five, you see our scope of work for the pole barn. We had a bid opening on January seventh, seventeen, excuse me. West Georgia Pole Barn came in at the lowest, most qualified bid. Their quote is included in the packet, beginning on page thirty-eight and finishing on page thirty-nine. I didn't want to include all of the other bids in there, but the other bid amounts are in the bid, the bid tab on page thirty-seven. West Georgia Pole Barn was forty-three thousand, six hundred and thirty-eight dollars. Riley Construction was a hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars. Prime Contractors was a hundred and sixteen thousand, one hundred and twenty-five dollars. And complete site was one hundred and thirty-five dollars, one hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. So when you see the notes that we had, we had there. So staff recommends that we move forward with this West Georgia Pole Barn bid to build all the pole barn.
When?
Purpose of the pole barn is again to protect our large public works.
Trucks.
Machinery trucks and also have a, also to have an adequate wash bay for again those public works trucks.
Yeah, we got to touch on it a little bit earlier about the extra maintenance of the vehicles, this is a huge part of that.
One bay will be cement with, the drain is going to our separate tanks. The other four, the other four bays are going to be just gravel cover again for the trucks to pull into.
Okay. Cliff, discuss the engineering cost of street and stormwater improvements on Harris Drive.
I need that, that other video.
Coming right up, sir.
Thank you, ma'am. Whether it's a video or a picture, you'll see it, this last race, the last rain that we had.
No, no, the one in Gray's Mill was taking the sides off the. Two different things.
This is, Chris took this picture standing at one twenty-three Harris Drive and this is a. Excuse me?
Video.
Oh, it will play? Well, it is video. But you'll see during that last one, that's what it looks like at the entrance of one twenty-three Harris Drive. And this has been a ongoing problem that we've heard about from this, this citizen, this residence for the last couple of years. And since we were down there, again, this is this stormwater improvement project that we're going to implement. In your, in your packet, you see the proposal from rent. This is just the engineer, cost of engineering, not the cost to build. Your page.
Forty-five.
Maybe, is it forty-five?
Yes.
Well, the page with the, with the, with the drawing on it, with the, with the draft, the draft is going to say what Harris Drive is going to look like. Again, this is simply the cost to engineer this. We're going to need to remove some trees, replace a water line, we're going to add a hydrant. There's only one hydrant on Harris Drive presently and it's on the far side, on the, when you go on Harris Drive, on the left side. There's none down on the near, excuse me, it's on the far right side, the top of the hill, near the Harris Drive house, the one the city owns. There is no fire hydrant on the left side near Main Street. We're going to be installing a new fire hydrant, widening the radius of the entrance egress of Harris Drive. Working with Michael, removing those, that broken pole, the tied-off poles, moving those back. So we'll make the entrance and exit of the street safer, adding a hydrant, fixing this stormwater problem. This custom, this, I said custom, excuse me, this resident is adamant about. Replacing the large oak trees, lining, aligning Harris Drive with a wider ceiling, with a wider sidewalk and potentially cherry blossoms coming down that side of the street and framing in the memorial. But the primary driver on this project is that problem right there.
Okay. Thank you, Cliff. Anything else?
Not on this one.
Okay, what do you got?
Okay. Gray's Mill Park. The purpose, Gray's Mill Park Sewer. I put, I believe, on each of your stations, this separate piece of paper. This is a shorter, less expensive route to get sewer to the Gray's Mill Park right there at the corner of Seaboard, Seaboard Street and North Avenue. We're going to come off our corner of Seaboard Street, cross onto four twenty North Avenue, cross under Seaboard Street, under the Silver Comet Trail, come out behind the caboose, then alongside the caboose. Again, this is in conjunction with what Michael is doing as far as improvements over there, the concession stand and Homer Leggett Park. So this, this is a quick, easy fix where we only have to discuss, which we have the agreement and the understanding with only one resident. And that initial resident was okay from the very beginning. This is only one resident that we're talking to for this to work.
This took a lot of planning.
We, we've been around and around, yes, ma'am.
Yep.
It took a lot of wrangling with GDOT to get them to come to the table with us.
Go ahead, say.
Yeah, and, and, and the contractor, the engineer, uh, has done a lot of that permit inquiries with, with DOT, DOT as well.
Too bad we didn't do this from the beginning.
Excuse me?
Too bad we didn't come up with this in the beginning.
We, we looked at it, but the engineering wasn't.
We got it.
We had to have several meetings with GDOT to finally get to this point.
Persuade them.
Yes. It's a good thing we have a good relationship with Michael Gravely.
Yes.
Okay, Chief, you're on, discuss authorizing the mayor, city manager, chief, please to sign a mutual aid agreement with Paulding County Sheriff's Office.
Yes, ladies and gentlemen, number ten and number eleven are actually so similar, I'd like to just discuss them both at the same time. Yearly, we have been signing agreements with the Paulding County Sheriff's Office, and unfortunately, I found out, we have not been doing so with the Dallas Police Department. Um, part of this agreement that we're wanting to sign allows extraterritorial jurisdiction in the event of emergency. For the Hiram Police Department to extend its jurisdiction into the county if requested by the county during a, an emergency. Or into the city of Dallas if requested by the city of Dallas, and vice versa, if we need assistance from either, they can come into the city. What it does is it does a number of things, it provides protections for the city by sharing the liability and ensuring who's liable for the actions of the officers. Who's liable for injuries that are sustained during those events, if there are injuries that are sustained by the officers. It allows for the actual use of Georgia law to cover the fact that we can make extraterritorial arrests in another jurisdiction, which is not normal in most circumstances. So, this allows us the opportunity to share resources between us and the other jurisdictions that are close to us.
Okay.
And, and again, both of these, number ten and number eleven are exactly the same, and we would just be signing with two different jurisdictions.
Thank you, Chief. All right, how about number twelve?
Uh, let me pass these out. These are refined copies. The city attorney was gracious enough to change the formatting and some of my language. Because apparently you can no longer use the word scofflaw when you talk about persons who violate the Georgia criminal code.
Yeah, you can, if you pride it.
Somebody under the age of forty-six.
Yeah, Chief, we just wanted it to be clear to your younger officers on your force.
These are copies of both, they're just put in the format that is more acceptable in the city's usage. So, um, gonna be unpopular, but it's something we have to address. The first is to move the jurisdiction for the issue of dumpster diving from state court to city court. At the moment, it is against the law, it is against state law for you to go into someone's dumpster and take items out of it. Even though they've been abandoned, it is still the property of the person that put it in there. And that they also have rights to the cost for the recycling of those materials that they put in there. So, for people to go in and take items out of it is a violation of Georgia law. Second part is, it's a health and safety issue. We have people, and a number of people, that are going through the dumpsters, have become very popular on social media to try to get people to go out and go through dumpsters behind commercial districts. Trying to find abandoned products and then go out and sell them. Now, I understand these are being abandoned for a reason, particularly in the instance of where we have food and other materials that are thrown away. As we had behind one business that happened this week, where they threw away outdated food, and people came along, picked it up, and were not only eating it in the parking lot. But, were telling us that they were gonna sell it to other people. So, there's a reason it's in the dumpster. Right now, for us to take any action against it, we have to arrest the person and take them to the jail. And I don't want to do that. I don't think that's the appropriate way to resolve this problem. Most of the time, we can warn folks, and then if we find them doing it again, then we will cite them under this ordinance. And bring them to the city's jurisdiction of the municipal court, for disposition under the city's code, as opposed to actually taking them to jail. But I'll give you another reason why this is important, we have a case right now behind one store here in Hiram. Where people went in and dumpster, went through the dumpsters this weekend, and it cost the business over a thousand dollars to have the parking lot cleaned. And all this stuff put back in the dumpster that these people had strung throughout their parking lot. This is impacting, seriously impacting their businesses, it's impacting the health. But more importantly, we have people that are taking outdated materials and trying to sell it, and it's not their materials, they need to stop this behavior. So, that's why this ordinance is being placed in fact, or we would like to place this ordinance in fact. And again, I don't want to take people to jail for this. I don't think it's something where I should handcuff someone and drag them into the jail. I don't think that's an appropriate resolution to this problem.
Any questions?
The second issue that you see is the unlawful use of dumpsters. One of the problems that we're having, particularly with companies that are advertising junk removal, or with people that are doing renovations, is they're taking all of these materials that they have and just dumping them next to dumpsters around the community. And, of course, now the city is responsible for picking this up, or the owner of the dumpster, uh, different businesses is now responsible for cleaning out this. Or we have to cite the owner of the business for not cleaning up around their business, and it's not their responsibility. And again, this is another thing, it is against the law for you to dump your materials in somebody else's dumpster. It is a state law violation, which requires us to take a warrant, arrest the person, and take them to jail. And again, not the absolute solution to this problem. I think most of this can be resolved by bringing them to the city court, and having the city court deal with those issues. So, instead of having these go through state law, we would like to bring these, both of these issues to the city court for resolution.
So, you're saying they would get a ticket?
Yep, they would actually receive a citation, a summons, and a court date. Now, repeat offenders, it would be up to the judge what he does with that, but again, in city court, they can be fined up to a thousand dollars, and there can be jail time. If they continue to violate the ordinance.
Would they have a fine on the first citation?
That would be judicial discretion. I, I could not comment on that, that would be up to our city judge.
And the main thing I see about this is writing a ticket, what, five minutes?
About.
And move them out of the way? Or spend two hours, or spend two hours going to the jail, taking a warrant, getting booked in, and our officers are off the streets.
And the city's charged fifty-five dollars the moment they step inside the jail.
I still think they should be fined, there should be a small fine to work just for the first time. I know, but then.
However, there are people that are living off of this, you know?
Yeah, but.
And if they're not aware.
Are they aware after they get the citation?
After the first citation is a warning, but many people are supplementing their income by doing this. I didn't know it was illegal until we spoke, so I definitely don't support it. One man's trash is another man's treasure, however.
Somebody put that on Facebook today.
However, I, I did some research, and I, I read about the benefits that it has to supplement people's income. And, for that reason, many people are, are practicing this and don't know they're breaking the law. I didn't know it was a law that was broken, you know, somebody's trash. But when we spoke, I understood it, so I don't, I support this. However, for the first offense, I think it should be a warning.
Well, again, that would be judicial decision. We can't comment on that. By enacting this ordinance, it would leave the discretion at the, at the judicial level.
Thank you, Chief.
Alright, sir.
Discuss details of the council retreat.
Why, they're really gonna be, it's in your court. Um, all the stuff's in the packet, as far as the food, the accommodation options. Um, if you have the digital copy, then the GMA, um, contractors in there. And then if you don't, if you have your physical one, then I gave you a copy of that.
And you need this filled out per each one of us.
This questionnaire is just something I drafted as a, an easier way for the planning, I didn't want a hundred emails. Oh, I want this, well, I think that, so I thought maybe this would be the best, you can sit down with the options, and then just fill this in. And if you want to add something to this, obviously you can, there's plenty of rooms. Um, but obviously, the, the schedule is important, and that's at the top, that's the schedule devised by Fox Hall. Because they know, they need to know the hours you want to be in this room, and the hours you'll be in that room, um, that sort of thing, so she did all of that for me. The room accommodations, if you want to stay, don't want to stay, there's two-bedroom cottages, there's five bedrooms, there's hotel rooms, I mean, it runs the gamut. So, tell me what you want there, and then Friday, a snack, because we're, we're not starting to like one, so I'm assuming everybody's had lunch. If you want to do lunch that day instead of snack, then tell me. And then dinner options, and then Saturday, obviously breakfast, snack, and lunch. And if you want to do like a one, two, three, you know, this is my first choice, second choice, third choice. But, this I thought would help kind of funnel the ideas.
On Friday night, they wanted to do dinner as a group.
Mm-hmm, yes, yes, you'll see that, it's scheduled seven to nine, so.
Okay.
Session one to five, break for, from five to seven, and then dinner, seven to nine.
I did email Jody and asked that if the, the department heads could be invited, did not receive, I know you're busy, did not get a response back, but were you able to invite?
I have talked to some of them about that, if you're wanting everyone, like from the chief, the operations director, and then of course, we have Kathy and Jackie, and, you know, Melissa would already be there along with myself, so that, pretty much, and Sally, uh, from core. So, I just need kind of feedback, and do you want everybody there from each department, or are you looking for specific?
I, I mean, I think, I don't think there's anything wrong with, uh, sending out the invite and, you know, leaving it up to them to decide.
I'll send it out tomorrow.
Okay, thank you.
Any other thoughts or needs or questions?
How, how many miles is it from City Hall to Fox Hill?
It is showing twenty-five miles.
Twenty-five, okay.
I don't know if you've ever been out there, but it's beautiful.
It is.
It's a beautiful place. There's a lot of green space, too, you could walk that entire two hours, it is gorgeous. And you're gonna build the biggest house or building, you're gonna build it. It's gonna be a Fox Hall record.
Your building.
No, I'll be bonding up.
She's thrilled about the team building.
The team building with the house, yeah, looking forward to it.
Oh, that would, okay.
She's gotta take off work.
Yeah, that's not it.
What? You got plenty of time.
Discuss, discuss the CareLink request for the use of the events place. See, this is a yes or no discussion.
Good evening, thank you for letting me, uh, come and just give our, our request to you all. Uh, my name's Amelia Belford, I'm the chairman of the board for CareLink. Um, if those of you probably are aware of what we do, but just for those that don't, we are a five-oh-one C, uh, organization, and we've had our doors open for over six years. We actually are a primary care office. But, the stipulation is that we only take patients that do not have insurance. So, we have folks that are homeless, we have folks that can't get insurance, we have folks that their employers don't offer it. And those are the patients that we have. Um, right now, where we're located is right across the street from the old Paulding Hospital, and we've been there, like I said, for over six years now. What has occurred to us is, because we're getting a lot more, uh, patients coming in, we've had such a tremendous increase. We've had almost nine hundred last year just visits, for opening two days a week, that we're gonna have to extend one extra day. So, we are in the process of getting additional clinicians to come in. We are an almost all volunteer, uh, group. The only, um, subsidy we have is with one nurse practitioner and our medical director. So, that being said, it's, it's come to our attention that, because we're seeing an increase, but we're in Dallas, we've had actual people tell us, well, I can't come there because I live in Hiram, or I live in South Paulding. So, they don't realize, we're open to all of Paulding, and even surrounding areas going to the northwest. So, what we'd like to do, and what's on our, uh, platform this year, is to start expanding out at other parts of the county. Now, if we were to get a medical van like the big RVs, they start at four hundred thousand. That's just not happening, ever, unless one of us wins the Lotto or something, it's just not gonna happen. So, in the meantime, what we've decided would be a way to do this is to have pop-up clinics throughout the county. Maybe once a month in this location, another, another month we'll have, it's another week, we'd have it in another location. And bring folks in, we do not, um, discriminate on who they are, where they're from. The only thing that they have to prove to us is that they don't have insurance. So, if we had, let's say, our, our wish is to be able to hit the Hiram location, because you're very concentrated, we have found that there are a lot of folks. There's over twelve to thirteen percent residents in Paulding County that do not have insurance. And I'm not talking about kids, we do not do pediatrics, we just do eighteen to sixty-five. But, that's a large amount of folks that just are not getting medical care. Not to mention, um, there's a lot of folks there that need mental health care, too. So, we're working with, with some organizations to get some counselors in-house to help with that problem. Because if you've got a medical, if you've got a mental health problem, there's probably a medical problem, too. We know you have pockets of, um, homeless camps. In certain locations, they've been filling me in as to where they are, but it's not just Hiram, there's Dallas, there's South Paulding, there's going out towards Rockmart, even though they're not part of Paulding. There's a lot of pockets out there, and if we can start having these pop-up clinics scheduled, but if we, let's say, we had one here. We would like to have the ability for you all to help promote this, we could get people scheduled in. We could, if we had a walk-in that it was emergency, yes, we could handle it. We would not administer medications at the site, we will refer them to, um, Dispensary of Hope to get their medications. Um, if, and we would not do anything invasive that would be there, it's just acting like an internal med office. So, what we'd like to do and ask you is, we've looked at a few places in Paulding County, there's a couple more that I need to speak with yet. But, the event place that you all have, I know that Red, Red Cross blood drives are done there. And when we are gonna set up, we're gonna bring our team in of clinicians and also office staff. Everything that we do, um, is through a computer system, we are not, so we have to be HIPAA compliant. Not only with our documentation, but also with the privacy of someone coming in to see us. So, we're in the process of gathering all the extra equipment that we are going to need, wherever we take it. Whether we take it here, or to a couple of different churches that we've entered in with. We have to be able to get that equipment there, not to mention now, we're gonna have to get additional clinicals, folks, and volunteers. We can't have them say, well, I'll do it Thursday, but I don't want to come in on Tuesday. So, there's a lot of efforts going forward on all the details that we're gonna have to, um, cover. So, what we are asking the city, since the event, uh, place is a very good location to hold something like this, that we could. That we could enter into some kind of partnership. This would not be a weekly thing. This might be the first Thursday of the month or whatever. We would adjust it based on our staffing and also what the availability was at the center. So that is our, our question. And if we do enter into some kind of relationship with you all to be able to utilize the facility. Of course, we would, you know, provide any documentation, insurance, anything that you needed. And we would have a schedule set so that, um, we're in the boundaries of what you all needed. So are there any questions you might have of me?
You had, uh, mentioned that, uh, you take walk-ins, but yet your webpage says.
No, we don't take walk-ins. What I'm saying is, and that's a good point. We take, we take appointments only because we have people coming in all the time. What I'm saying is if, when we have a, an event, they will be scheduled. But if we had someone that came in on an emergency, we would evaluate that particular. But we don't want to be the twenty-four hour CBS clinic, right?
Because, uh, I went and was looking back and forth and I, I remember with Rita.
Yeah.
And God, way back in two thousand thirteen. That it had to be, you had to make an appointment.
Yep.
You were not allowed to walk in.
Right.
Okay, and, okay. I was just wondering about that. And, um, I did read the proposal really good. I also saw it said you wanted us to use our social media and possibly a billboard?
Well, I've noticed, I don't live in Hyrum, I'm up on the north end of Paulding. But every time, I'm down here all the time. Um, I know you have those, those billboards and the flashing, you know, road detour or whatever.
Our digital signs, we can't, we can't.
That's it.
We can't use those.
Okay. That was just something that we were looking at. Um, I'd want to get ideas from you all because, you know, we don't know what you have that would be available to work with us.
We, we are, we're not, we're not a, uh, an advertising agency, we're, we're a small city.
Darn it.
Could we partner with Afta?
I'm sorry, what?
That's not for tourism. That's not tourism.
Thank you.
Yeah.
However, being, bringing that type of service, which is well-needed with our residents, our citizens, we know that. Um, could we, are we legally able to use our social media to market it? Maybe not a billboard, maybe not the R D.
Right.
It's like some type of marketing, maybe announcing it here in our, it's not gonna cost if I say, hey, next Thursday, this is going to take place. And can we legally advertise that on our website and, and to our social media platforms?
I don't know what your parameters are, I'm just throwing this thing out, yeah.
If there's a substantial public benefit that's afforded, it's a, it's a policy choice for y'all to make.
Okay, so it's.
And I would imagine within a four or five-hour window of time that we would need, you know, the space. We're not gonna have a hundred people. We're gonna have ten, fifteen, maybe twenty folks that would be on the schedule. So it's not like we would be out there with a long line going all the way up to two seventy-eight.
Now, one of the concerns that was just brought to my attention by my councilmate is the cost, the nominal fee that we set as a policy. Which I never wanted to impose a, a, a fee, a usage fee for any nonprofits bringing services that our citizens need. That was a compromise. So I figured minimal was like ten dollars an hour. I couldn't go, I think, maybe we can readjust that, I don't know. However, we set a policy and we need to support consistent, consistent practices, equitable practices. And, and we spoke prior to the meeting and I told you, I support what you do.
Oh, sure.
Um, and if there's anything that I can do personally or on this council. But I cannot vote in favor of waiving the fee because that is a policy that we set. And if we do it for one, that opens the door for the other. But it is a nominal fee of ten dollars per hour.
Okay, right now, it's a yes or no decision by the council. All the details will be worked out when they fill out an application.
Well, I wanted you to get, I think this discussion is a discussion night to share these thoughts that we're having. So you can have that opportunity to counter, reach out, and lobby it. So I think a yes or no doesn't work for me because that's not communicating what my concerns are as an elected official. And being the voice of other people and having to remain consistent in how I operate.
Sure.
And that's why I'm sorry that I'm sharing this information with you now. I thought this was an opportune time to do that.
That's only fair and we don't need to be singled out as the only one. It has to be equitable across the board. So I'm aware of that. Um, also, this wouldn't happen next week or next month. This is, there's a lot of detail that we have to still go into. But one of the basis was where are we gonna hold this? And so that's why I'm coming to you now. It might be second quarter, late second quarter before something started up.
And then you talk about like a monthly basis, correct?
That's what we'd like to now, of course, based on how, how it's received within the community. We might find, you know what, we might need to do this twice a month. Or we might decide we're not drawing the folks in the pockets in this area and we need to move somewhere else. So, um, this is a.
Hit or miss.
It's, it's.
Trial and error.
To be, yeah, to be changed if needed.
And are there set hours that you have in mind and days of the week? Because I know on the weekends, we don't, we restricted it for pure rentals.
Right, we would not, first of all, we would not do it on the weekend because our clinic is open on that day, on Saturdays. But also, I know that that would be a time that you would be running it out for a wedding or a, a party or things like that. So we would not want to infringe on that. So if you said, well, our Thursdays are always dead in the water, then that's something we would do.
Would it be typically like over at Dallas, like on, from eight-thirty a.m. till two?
More than likely, it would be in the afternoon. In fact, we're gonna be opening a third day shortly. And the reason we are gonna do that, but we're gonna have it more in afternoon hours to capture some of the folks that are working. So we're looking at a two to six. And it's a possibility, if we find, just looking at demographics around here, what would be the best? It might be a twelve to four. But here again, we have to plug in an hour to set up and an hour to tear down. And then we have our, our, yeah, yeah. So that, this is all very fluid, basically. Any other questions? Just thank you for what you're doing.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Melissa, consent agenda?
Yes, sir. Okey-dokey, so we've got the, um, employment retirement on new business. The budget amendments, consent. The, uh, events, consent. The proposal for the renovations at Homer Leggett. I just put ongoing unless you all feel like there's a vote that you want to make next week.
Did Michael want to give us a proposal to start on one of them?
I was gonna ask about that because when Michael, uh, ended, he said he just needed direction from the council. So what does that look like?
I mean, is there like one thing you want to start on and?
I mean, it's, it's kind of like multiple projects within a project. So it wouldn't be me, uh, I wouldn't have like a proposal, we put out the bid for two hundred grand for some, one person to do this. It'd be, we get the restrooms done, we can move the fence, we do some stuff in-house, we can purchase equipment and get it installed. Um, I guess if there was a vote, it would be, you like the plan, it would move forward that direction to, to try to make it come to life.
Well, is there, is there anything that, like, everybody likes, hey, we want to do this first, this second, this third. Do you have a prioritize?
Yeah, I prioritized it kind of in, in the presentation with the restrooms and the seating and the shading and moving, moving the fence. That could be, it'd be separate, but it'd be like, it could be like one phase of it. And then we could come back and add equipment and do fitness if we wanted to do that later on.
Would any of the monies come out of, like, sanitation?
A combination of budgeted funds through general fund as well as some, uh, as some SPOSS.
Okay.
That's dedicated to recreation. Um, again, there are certain things that he's addressing that are maintenance and repair items or, or upgrades that are, that are urgently needed. Uh, and we'll probably be able to address those just from an operational standpoint. But there will be some things such as the workout area or some of the dog park, uh, changes where we may come back to you and say, well, this is a larger expense. And because it's coming out of SPOSS funding, or, you know, we'll want to bring that back to you. But part of it will also be what we, uh, settle with the budget discussions that we will have in our budget meeting. You know, you'll see these are the funds we're dedicating to that coming from this, this area.
Well, it sounded like he really wanted to get started on some of this stuff.
We can just start it on phase one where he can start doing the bathrooms and some of those.
Yeah.
Well, that's what I was gonna suggest, we go ahead and move forward with phase one.
Yeah.
And continue our discussions with going into the next couple of phases. And, and we'll know more, as Jody said, where we're gonna pull the funds from to get it done. But I definitely believe phase one's gotta get done as quickly as possible.
Not only that, that's our common trail, that's one of our tourism attractions.
Yeah, we want to make, we need to get it where it looks decent to draw people over to it.
Would it be appropriate to put it as a new business item for him to come to the meeting with a recommendation for his priority for that meeting?
Yes, I think so.
Yeah.
I thought it was already clearly lined, uh, in the presentation, the phase one, phase two.
But start with bathrooms at this one and this one and get it.
Go for it.
Yeah.
Go for it, however you want to go about it.
Okey-dokey, so the next one is the pole barn and that is at Duncan Circle, consent.
Yeah.
And the engineering cost for Harris Drive, consent.
Yes.
Hold on. So Jody, can you please explain? Because many people, the optics are that this is an extension of the Veterans Memorial Park. And that is what I want you to clarify, let's just clear the air for that. Because it is based on a timeline, uh, of need and the time of rotating the roads. Because it makes sense when you explain that to me.
In, in the, well, since two thousand and six, we have basically gone through a cycle of, uh, resurfacing roadways or doing roadway improvements. Most of them are titled roadway improvements because we're also addressing stormwater component, components. Sometimes we're pulling water lines out from underneath the edge of the pavement to preserve the integrity of the roadway. In the eighteen years that I have been doing this, almost nineteen years that I've been doing this. We have cycled most of the roads that the city is responsible for, there are only a few remaining. And in the natural cycle of things, typically you're gonna pull about eighteen to twenty-two years of life out of a road that has been recently resurfaced or repaired. Uh, that leaves us with a few roads remaining, one of them is Harris Drive. It was on the na- normal cycle for us to be able to do this. It probably has been about twenty-five years or longer since that road was last resurfaced. Uh, same thing goes for Duncan Circle, which we're currently doing as a part of an L-MIC project with SPOSS. Uh, it probably has been about anywhere from twenty-five to thirty years since that one was resurfaced. So we're currently addressing it and we're gonna address more and button that down. But we only have about, I think it's about eight more roads remaining before we basically come back to the road that was resurfaced prior to me starting work here, which was Fitzgerald Street, and do it all over again.
I just wanted that to be articulated, conveyed to the public. So they understand it's not an extension, that it's time, it's need, and we have a timetable to address our roads.
Well, and additionally, if you look at all the recent road improvements that we've done that have not been adjacent to Harris Park or any of the other parks, we have generally tried to include a sidewalk component because the desire is to make the downtown more walkable. And if you've got an amenity there or you don't, you're still trying to extend that opportunity to have a sidewalk component that runs along someone's residential neighborhood so that they can walk to a park that's ten minutes away. So it, it ties in everything together.
So it's still consent?
Yes.
Okay. Alrighty, um, Grays Mill Sewer, I think new, new business for that one? I'm just kidding, can't, consent. I know it's been a long time, I'm just trying to make a little joke. Okay. Um, the mutual aid agreement with Paulding County, consent. With Dallas, consent. The dumpster diving ordinance, consent. The unauthorized use of dumpsters, consent. The council retreat, I put new business because, um, we've gonna have the GMA contract in there for signing and also the Fox Hall agreement. And we don't really have those details worked out yet until I get your feedback on food and rooms. So that way.
And you need that like Tuesday?
Sue, well, before Tuesday. Because I'll have to send any revisions to them to update that. Cause if you look at that contract Fox Hall put in there, you know, there's a certain number of rooms and things like that. But if we're not gonna meet that, I'm not putting that in the contract. So I would need that.
By Friday.
Yeah, yeah, no later than Friday, please, pretty please. Um, and then Carolink, new business.
Well, the matter of Carolink, just to put it forward, and I, the mayor and I spoke before the meeting as well. It's up to the council to determine whether or not you want to move forward with that. And the details are typically covered by the agreement, either the rental agreement that's already in place or case specific. Because there may be a unique circumstance dealing with Carolink where we'd have to craft an agreement that would cover certain concerns or issues or liabilities. So those are the details that would be worked out after you determine just by policy, do you want to move forward with it?
So that proposal can be sort of shifted around?
Right, and we have to, you know, they have to determine if they're willing to meet what we think we need to have in the agreement. And then we would have to be willing to accept, you know, what they want to have in the agreement.
Okay, February is Black History Month. February twenty-eighth, uh, this Friday coming up. For, uh, Mr. Tyrone Griffin's suggestion, we're gonna do a video at the, uh, Veterans Memorial. So that we can, uh, put it on the webpages. Uh, they want to put it on their webpage as well. Uh, I was, I was, it's eleven a.m. We're gonna be doing the video. I have lined up a bagpiper to be there to play some bagpipe music. Uh, Jody's gonna be wearing my utility kilt. Uh, let's see. At the Paulding County Airport, I don't know if many of you even know, we have an airport out of Paulding County, but we do. Uh, our current, uh, airport director is retiring at the end of, uh, March and he's leaving. Uh, they had a search committee and they selected a, uh, young man by the name of Nathan. And he'll, uh, he'll be starting on March one and working through, uh, the month of March with Terry. And he's gonna take over as the new director of the airport. I do, but I, I don't, I don't remember, I'm old. Anyway, the, uh, if you have, if anybody has not been out to the Paulding County Airport, you owe it to yourself to go out there. There's a lot, uh, a lot of improvements that have been made out there. And they're building some new hangars and they also have a museum out there. The Museum of Flight, which is getting a lot of, uh, school, uh, programs, the field trips, the kids go out there for that. It's really, it's really a nice area to get some old airplanes out there. March fourth is the next regular session for our, our regular meeting. Bob, you have anything?
Uh, yeah, council member Carol and I are gonna host a town hall meeting on Friday night, uh, March seventh. Uh, at the event place to discuss.
Stuff.
Stuff, but also get citizen input as to what they would like to see done in certain areas that we're gonna be addressing.
What time?
Uh, six o'clock.
Six until midnight.
No, I'm not being there till midnight.
No.
Derek?
No.
Chief?
Just one quick announcement. Uh, Motorola was here for a couple of days working with us last week. Friday is the first day body cameras go live with the higher police department, all uniformed personnel. Starting at six a.m. on Friday morning and from that point thereafter, we'll be equipped with five gear. We're still working on.
One, one thing at a time. Jody? All right, there won't, uh, there won't be no executive session this evening, we're not doing that. Derek?
Make a motion to adjourn, work session.
All in favor? I want to know what Derek's gonna do when he makes a motion to adjourn, and nobody seconds it.